Today's Thursday, October the 19th. It's about six o'clock. Call to order, our regular select board meeting. First item is set adjust agenda. I had, when I saw the agenda, thought that perhaps we should move item number one to just communication from the audience, but I saw the agenda kind of after it'd been posted. And I don't know, we maybe have other people coming, so I feel like at this point, we probably ought to roll with it the way it is.
Okay. That works.
Anybody else have anything to change, add, amend? All right, so we're gonna roll with the agenda as it is. Communication from the audience. Hello, audience.
It's great to have an audience.
It is, lovely. Even if everybody's here for a reason, that's good, because you're here. Next, select board approve minutes from last time, which was October the 5th.
I can motion to approve the select board meeting minutes of October the 5th as written. Second.
Any discussion, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Danny Hale, are you a yes for the minutes there?
I was not there.
Okay, you're abstaining.
Yes.
Got it. So, motion carries, with minutes are approved. Next town manager report, Mr. Upson.
So, I've got, so we're starting the FEMA projects. They're called EEIs, which are essential elements of information are starting to trickle in on the portal. So, we're beginning to compile that information to plug into the portal for reimbursement. Some of the emergency stuff is coming in first, like debris cleanup. Most of the road stuff was lumped into one project, so hopefully those reimbursements will come in as we plug in those, the essential elements of information. So, that's going well. They were back in town for Fisher-Folly Bridge, Tucker Brook Bridge, and the retaining wall on South Main Street they looked at, the damage, doing damage assessments. What was the third one?
Green Brooklyn.
Green, the bridge on our town line. So, they're just collecting information, documenting those damages. They mentioned that they, we might tie the pedestrian bridge in the abutment on that side because it was part of the wall. I don't know how that's gonna work, but that might be included in some of the damage.
But anything we do, we spend first and it's reimbursed later?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did they also look at the Hardwood Farms Bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
Didn't they? No, they didn't look at that one. No.
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 It was just the only forest that we went to.
Right.
Okay.
He made up two different slips for the retaining wall one, because he didn't know whether it was gonna be under the bridge fire or if it was just for the retaining wall.
Oh, okay.
So, he did them both at the same time, whichever way it wants to go.
Yep.
Okay.
We held on Wednesday, Tuesday, on Tuesday, we held a disaster debrief. Helen Beatty headed that up. We had a lot of stakeholders that were part of the disaster, the flood, and, you know, the days after the flood. So, we debriefed on things that went well, things that we could do better, and strategies to update our emergency response plan. So, that went well. We learned a lot. We're, we're gonna add, you know, some of the communication items, the levels of communication that we have. We learned that there were some holes, so we're gonna try to fill those holes the next time we have to do this, which I hope is not anytime soon.
Will we see, I mean, I know I was there, but I had to leave early, so will the board see like, like either minutes or notes or outputs from that eventually?
Yeah, we could put together.
Because I think it's really just to update the emergency response plan, but we could
do a summary of the meeting.
That would, that'd be really cool, if someone, not necessarily you, but if someone wanted to do that. Because there was, there was a bunch of stuff that came out, and I thought was good discussions, so since I had to leave early, others would probably like to know.
Yeah. Like expanding the email notification, emergency notification, listserv, getting that out there so people sign up for it. And then just some organizations that felt that they weren't included in a lot of the communications. So, we're hoping, like I said, to fill those gaps.
And there were also talk about other things that could be improved, right? Things that we could have on hand and...
Right, like an emergency shelter, like the, well, the items that we would need in an emergency shelter, we have the shelter, but like cots, more food, more supplies. We kind of had to bubble gum some of that together. The Vorac marketing project, which is the, like the logo and the brochure is coming along. There's been a couple group meetings. Palt's Creative has put it, put a pretty good product together, so they're working on the final touches of that, so there's more to come on that, but that's pretty exciting, because we'll have like a, we'll have a packet of recreation opportunities in Hardwick.
Little map.
And with the map, yep. So, it's looking pretty good.
And a lot of the rail trails are looking pretty good.
Yep. Yep. And then they started on the slate repair today.
Oh, nice.
That's the lift out there.
That's what the lift's for.
And then, just an update on the wastewater plant, we're about roughly 15 loads in to the dewatering and cleanout. And we're probably like halfway, a little less than halfway, just to guess at it, just by looking at the sludge levels in the lagoon. But it's, it's good primary sludge, but doesn't smell all that bad. And the percent solids is high on the dewatering, so they're getting like 32 to 35 right now, which is good. So, that should get better as they progress. Yeah, but it's still really expensive.
And you have a prediction for the timeline of that project?
There're probably gonna be another three weeks in the lagoon cleaning it out.
You think they'll have it re-lined before winter?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Unless it stays warm into January.
At this rate?
Yeah.
Yeah. Huh, okay.
But maybe that could change.
Yeah.
So...
All right.
We'll, we'll see once we get closer to the end of the sludge cleanout.
Yep.
All exciting stuff.
Yeah. Lots of sludge.
Yeah.
Looked like there was activity at the library this week, too.
There was, they poured concrete today.
They did?
Yep.
Wow.
Yep.
Okay.
But that, I'll let the library trustee give you that, that update next time she's here.
Oh, come on, you can keep us.
I haven't been over there.
All right.
We are, we are shooting to do that conduit install across West Church Street, November 1st, right around that time.
Good.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up is road foreman report, Tom Fadden.
Short this week. Last week, we ended up doing redboard. You probably knew about it.
So, I was gonna ask you if you did it, because Opi told me I was gonna be out of water, and I never noticed that I was.
Really? Okay. Yeah, because there's a couple other ones.
They really did clean it.
Yeah.
I'm matured.
You matured. By the way, yeah, so that's all I've done and over with for the, for the year. Basically, last week, we spent a lot of time up on Hardwick Farms, getting stuff, trucked up there and stuff, get the bridge up there last week and stuff, blocks and everything else. We did a couple road just for quick grading around the village. Then this whole entire week, we basically went to Hardwick Farms, went to bridge together and stuff, and ramping it up, and that road is officially open, open. It's one lane, it's only 12 foot wide, the deck's only 12 foot wide. You know, that's a little bit wider than what you see downtown from yellow to white line, actually the 10-foot travel lane. So, it is open now, so everybody can go through, even though everybody has been going through.
One at a time, though.
Yeah, it's a lot safer now anyways. For us, it is. At least we'll be able to plow through it now.
Yeah.
So, because if not, we were gonna make a situation down below where we're gonna have to add on a call work or turn around and everything else for the trucks and stuff. So, so, yeah, so basically, that's it. Next, next week, we're, it looks like the weather's good, so we'll be hammering out the roads, grading and raking them out, and trying to get ahead of stuff, and we've got oil changes and maintenance on trucks, getting plow frames on. The one ton is in, is in, in the body and stuff, is getting put onto it right now, so hopefully we'll have that truck back in about three weeks, so.
Wow. That'd be good.
What about the parking today?
The what?
You also did some signage downtown today.
Oh, just a little bit of paint.
Just paint.
They put, they put the yellow, the yellow in the no parking area.
Oh.
It's highly visible.
I have not seen it.
I can give the police chief's report.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They've written 12 parking tickets.
Wow.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Have they collected any money?
Uh, yeah.
Wow. Do we have to think about that for upcoming budget or revenue?
We do not.
We could balance the budget with parking tickets.
All right, any questions for Tom? All right, I'm gonna move us along to Hardwick Electric Report. We have Michael Ambrosino here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tough couple months, ATTB.
Yep.
So, you know, we lost the little cotton plant in that storm, and we're in the process of trying to put the pieces together. We're looking to go out and borrow about $2 million to put the plant back and do some other infrastructure work. We're not even sure what the total cost is yet. We're sending a generator to a company in Connecticut to evaluate it. We've got the Turk and going to Ontario to someone who's gonna resurface it and put it back together, but we'll probably have a commission for at least five, realistically nine to 12 more months. So, it's fortunate, unfortunately, we don't have the hydro plant for electricity. Fortunately, the cost of electricity that we purchased on the open market hasn't been that bad this year, so it didn't cost us too much money, but we gotta get that thing back into operation. So, talking to local banks, and we're talking to the Hardwick Bond Bank.
Vermont Bond Bank.
Vermont, yeah. Who might say Hardwick?
Yeah.
Who would she have? We're also looking to go for a little re-decrease to help pay for all the expenses that are going to occur. We're putting that together. It'll probably take a little more time to just get all the numbers together, but that'll be going in soon. Our crews are working overtime a little bit. We've given broadband poles and some of the poles that were damaged that have to be replaced. So, that's all happening, probably bring some crews from outside out group in to get some of this work done before the winter. What's going on here? The Woodbury property matter of quality has been filed legally, so we'll see what, how that resolves itself. And our finances are down about 4% under budget, and our expenses are down about 1%. So, it could've been a lot worse, still for warm weather, and we're trying to just get the best prices we can to put this hydro plant back in order again. So, there's a lot of stuff going on, a lot of financial tough times, we'll get through them. I think that covers most of the highlights and everything.
Do we have confirmation of a meeting on November 20th? Between the, the ATTB? We wanted to do that, didn't we?
Talked about waiting. You could.
Yeah, whatever.
I just remember that we talked about it.
We didn't talk about it. Then there was some, there was some stuff that came up that we wanted to wait on, but we can do that.
Yeah.
Would you, would you guys be willing to meet, do a joint meeting on the 20th?
Well, I'll find out, but yeah, I think it'd be great, but by then, we have a lot more information than we have right now.
Right.
Because we get to the end of a lot of...
We, we were talking about it the last meeting, pulling together a joint meeting for your November meeting, so we would do it, are you meeting at four o'clock now?
We are now, yes.
Huh?
We are four o'clock.
You are, okay. So, it would be before four o'clock.
No. Not after.
Do you want to meet after? How long, how long do your meetings go for?
Anywhere from one and a half to three hours, they, they go long sometimes. But if we know we're gonna have a joint meeting, we won't have other people come to the meeting usually.
All right, can you let me know?
We'll do it before.
Can you let me know if that'll work?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Good to get a meeting going again. It's been a while.
Okay.
Questions for Michael? Other than that? Thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
Yeah, I hope that the financial position remains good enough.
Yeah. I think we've been pretty lucky so far, but things change quick.
Yeah. Yeah. All right.
All right, guys, thank you so much.
Thanks, Michael.
I like to stay, but I'm gonna go home and keep sneezing.
Okay.
I don't want you to have to get what I have.
All right.
Take care.
You, too. All right, next up is item one, select board to discuss air and water quality concerns on Bridgeman Hill. I know we've heard from you guys before, and I don't know what, what jurisdiction or any kind of role the select board directly plays, but certainly happy to hear from you. Yeah. No? It's just hiding.
So, I can't hear anyone.
That's because we're not talking.
Okay?
We're waiting.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay. Here we are.
To your question...
You might have to come, their speakers are here, so mics. Make...
Yeah.
Careful.
Stay right there. Okay, your question is why, okay, why here, why the select board?
Yeah.
Couple reasons. One is, I gave to the state on this, they said if this problem is termed as a nuisance, then the proper channel is your local government, not the state. So, that's one of the reasons I'm here at the select board. The other reason is, you know, you talked about the wastewater plant in town, so anything involving wastewater, air quality, water quality is a public interest item, and part of being here is just making sure that the public is informed and the select board is informed. And as far as, this is a neighbor-to-neighbor situation, but we're on our fourth year of it with no progress. So, that's really the reason that we're here and why there was a letter is there's dialogue, there's not, it's not bad dialogue, but there's zero progress, and this was one of the worst years. So, I would like to update the public and the select board just on what's going on, and that way, anything moving forward, there's a background on it. And I think it is an item that you should be aware of. Okay, so what's the issue? This is not related to any farming or manure. This is strictly, there's a bottling plant up on Bridgeman Hill, and the wastewater is collecting the lagoon with no, no manure in it. That manure, it collects, it builds up, in the spring, it melts, it gives off vapor and gas, and then that gas is, is traveling. This started in the spring of 2020. When the issue first started, it was a problem because waste, extra waste was being brought in, so it was an enhanced problem in 2020. That practice, to my knowledge, is no longer happening, so these are just the on-farm bottling waste.
What kind of waste is it?
So, when they're pasteurizing and bottling milk, all the wastewater, so this would be similar to, could you go back to that picture? If you see the trucks from Cattle Creamery go around and spray and disperse their wastewater as part of wastewater plant for the creamery, this is the same, except this is an on-farm enterprise right now, so there's no actual, you know, it's, the dispersal is all under the exemptions of being on-farm. So...
What does it smell like?
It smells like, like wastewater, like sewer stream and plant. So, and so this is one of the trucks, this is last December, and usually, they'll, they've done dispersal twice, but the odor is a problem before they do the dispersal, and then after they do dispersal. And then, one of the reasons we're here and then we sent the letter is, in 2023, in June, they spread, it was a very large volume of water, so it was something like a big increase in it, and there was not dissipation of the smell for really months afterwards, despite all the rain. So, it really felt like we were hitting a saturation point with the amount. So, if you go one further, too, this is really a function of wind direction, who's affected. So, we've sent a letter to Bridgeman Hill Farm, that was from my family, the Fortman family, if you can zoom out a little bit, please. The Degrocer family, Andrew Meyer, and then Nancy Shepherd. And really, the two affected families here, if you see, this is the lagoon, everyone familiar with where this area is, right up on Bridgeman Hill. This is a wastewater lagoon, so this pit was designed for dairy manure, but there's no dairy manure in it. Instead, it's just getting a pure wastewater into it. It builds up, it starts to give off vapor, air, I think, you know, I said, anyone who's gone up Bridgeman Hill Road with their windows open in the summer might've got hit by it, because typically, these are your prevailing winds. In the spring, we get the no wind, and I think that's like heavier than air situation, so it tends to go downhill towards us, so we're the most affected family. And then typically, the wind is gonna cut it right across the road, so it's off in this area, and sometimes that is right on the Degrocer family, who couldn't be here tonight, they're working at the funeral. But really, I've talked to a lot of the other residents, they're not affected, so I don't want to overstate that this is something that's clouding the entire hill. It's really a function of a very specific odor that's very foul. If you were to stand in its path, your reaction would be, I want to leave, and you would, but if it's, if it was in your home, or on your back porch, or you're just going outside in the morning to work, then it becomes a more serious situation. So, we engaged with them in 2020. Again, there's always been a good dialogue, they, they recognize that there's a problem, and they want to do something to solve it, but in 2023, the problem was worse than it ever been, and that's what brought us here. So, that's the air quality issue. Can you go one more, please? There's a concern for the future for water quality, and the reason is, we don't know, this is all done on an on-farm exemption, but there's no theoretical limit for how much wastewater is gonna go onto Bridgeman Hill. Because this, this operation potentially bring, at one point, to bring in other milk and process it there, and it's also a purchase feed operation, so it's not limited by the land base to how much milk is processed there. So, the public issue to be aware of is there a large wastewater dispersal and treatment operation on Bridgeman Hill, and it needs to be observed, because there's really no theoretical limit to how much wastewater is gonna go into the ground here, because it's all being done on state exemptions under farm, and that it's already a problem now. And those are the, the main pieces that I wanted to get across.
Just a few, no, no, are they only spreading in that, in that Bridgeman Hill area, or are they spreading in other places?
They're only spreading on the fields that are associated with Bridgeman Hill Farm.
Okay, so in, basically in this map, the ones that are by the Shepherd Farm Lane, like those are the fields of the sides of Bridgeman Hill?
Yes.
So, it's not a huge land area?
It's not a huge land base, and I, I can't give you any information on the, the volume of wastewater, I can tell you that trucks will run for three days of full day operations to get the, to get that, and that usually is twice a year. So, right now, this is kind of the time of year things cool off, the problem is dissipated, and we'll just be waiting for when things thaw in the spring. If the water's built up, things heat up, and then we'll, typically for us, there's no wind, and there's a south wind, so we're most affected right in early spring, and I don't know what it's gonna be like then, because we did receive a reply letter from, from Ryan Andrews from the farm, and he said he's working on some things to put wood ash in there. So, again, a continued dialogue, but we would like the dialogue from now on to be with the public, not just point to point, just because that was ineffective for us. So, the other thing we requested in our letter was some type of third-party testing of water quality, being familiar with the area of Bridgeman Hill, there's a tremendous amount of water under the ground, there's a tremendous amount of water moving under the ground, and we see that all the time. And so, there's a concern that a complete saturation of the groundwater with this substance could lead to water quality issues. And so, what we asked for on our letter was the ability of someone, third party, to just do testing, because this potentially will shift from an above-ground dispersal operation to a leach field type operation, where it's being pumped directly in the ground. And I think that that's something that the public should know where it is and what the volume of wastewater that's going in there, especially from our experience from this year, that the ground's incredibly saturated. So, really, weeks to months after the spreading, there's, there's still smell.
How deep is the water table underneath the surface?
That's gonna vary, you know, this is a fairly large area of acreage on the hill. I can only speak in my understanding, so the water is moving under the ground on Bridgeman Hill, it's a unique geologic area, it's a seam between two very different geologic zones, and we see water come out of the ground as you descend down the slope. A lot of times, you'll see water coming out of the ground, but I can't, I couldn't give you a clear answer exactly where the water table is. So, that's, that's what I have for you, I want you to be aware of it, in case, you know, things escalate, we want the discourse to be civil and, and open, and, and anyone else who wanted to speak on this to have the ability here to dispute anything that I'm saying, or, so I did reach out to Ryan and let him know we were doing this here, and he did respond to our letter that you received. And if you need a copy of that, I can get it to the select board.
I think we had it.
The response?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I read her response. Did everybody read her response? I can forward it.
Sorry. I did talk to our zoning administrator about the nuisance stuff. Because of the ag exemption, it really, there's a lot under that umbrella in Vermont. Have you reached out, you mentioned in your letter about the Department of Agriculture going down those routes?
Yeah.
Best management practices?
Yeah, we filed an initial complaint, and we're not accusing anyone of violating any of those practices, also are breaking any law.
Right.
Although we do...
The quality of life stuff is...
Yeah, the concern for us is, again, the no theoretical limit, so if, if milk can be brought in and processed on Bridgeman Hill, that's an industrial, not an agricultural activity. The property is under conservation easement to be a farm, not a wastewater, not a bottling plant wastewater dispersal area. So, I understand there's some exemptions that come, but our concern is that a massive increase in the amount of wastewater is all gonna fall under this exemption, which is really designed for something that's tied to the land base and stuff.
Right.
That, that's the main message I wanted to get across. So, I, I'm not saying that there's a water quality issue right now, I'm saying that we, what we observed in 2023 was disturbing enough that all the four different entities that signed this letter decided to take our time out and to, and to address this, because we're concerned about the environment and the place where we live.
And just quickly, you mentioned a third party doing some water testing, is that something that you're hoping the town can help with, or the state is that?
We mentioned the land trust, because there's conservation easement on the property. And for Vermont, agency that has a water quality division, so I think those would be the, the two that if, if permission was given from the farm, and either one of those two entities was willing to just do some testing again, that would help this farmer's concerns for the public and for us.
Thank you for coming. Yeah, again, I don't, I'm not... Thank you for coming. Um, yeah, again, I don't, I'm not, not clear on what, if any role the select board has in a, in any kind of direct way, um, but it is good to, to know about it.
I would just say, I grew up on a dairy farm. I was very glad I didn't live there when my father went to an open lagoon. I feel your pain.
Well, no, I, I, I want to, uh, I want to respond to that, um, because we've been around, uh, manure. And, uh, I want to be very clear that this is not a dairy manure issue. And what's coming out of trucks is not dairy manure. And, uh, and this is a new problem that's based on a new set of, uh, operating parameters there, where the removal of the manure, um, from the wastewater is actually a problem. Uh, because it, nothing is there to, to mix with it. And so I just, I just wanted to be clear, because I think some people looking initially at this issue will dismiss it and say, you just don't like spreading. That's really not what we're talking about at all. Thank you for your time.
Sure. Maybe they also want to say anything, or? Okay. All right, thank you, Steve. Next item is select board to consider appointing Jan Mueller to the Hardwick Equity Committee. And I believe we had a letter of interest from Jan, and I believe he's also gone to-
Yep. Um, he's participated in quite a few meetings, and, um, the letter's not in the packet, but it was in the board folder. I can make a motion to appoint Jan Mueller to the Hardwick Equity Committee.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, that's everyone, so thank you.
Will you let him know, Kayla?
Yes, oh, thank you.
Awesome. So motion carries. Next, item three, select board to consider approving a cannabis cultivator license for Michael Parker. Um, we had, is Michael Parker here?
Might be him.
Uh, we had, uh, we had information in our packet. Um, you're too late, Jan.
We just nominated him, but thanks for coming.
We can read that one early.
Now you can join the meeting. We're ahead of, we're ahead of schedule.
Do you want to say anything?
Uh, I just want to say that it's been, um, thank you, and, uh, I've been helping out in the small ways up until now, and maybe in order going forward. Um, trying to bring whatever my, my experience or whatever to what they're doing, things important work, and I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Thanks for coming, we appreciate it.
Take care.
Danny appreciates it when people come.
So, how long, you can't hear it?
Yeah, oh, well, he's gone now, too.
Yeah, the sound in this meeting, your sound is really, really bad there, just for everyone knows.
You sure it's not your ears?
I told you.
No, when I've been, uh, when, when I've been on Zoom, the sound has been very bad, too.
It's not great.
So I don't know how to fix it, but at some point, we ought to try to-
Well, wait, go back, go back.
Eric and Opie, you are fine, but like, anyone in the crowd, or that gentleman that just was standing up? No, no, it's, it, it like, it tries to grab the sound, so it goes in and out, and you can't understand it.
Oh.
It's coming, well, the sound is coming from my mic here, so this is, this is the bottom line.
Like whoever's speaking right now, but my child not be speaking because you cannot understand.
It picks up in here. Can you go back to the-
Does it make sense, just in case, since we're ahead of schedule, to move up our quarterly budget, in case Michael shows up?
Yeah.
Our microphone level-
Can you move the speaker volume? Move that all the way up?
Oh, you think that'll help?
I don't know. That's not the microphone.
No, because the microphone's already up.
Yeah.
So sometime, I know this is not what we're discussing right now, but sometime, maybe we should do a little session where we set this up, like during the day, just to try to debug it. Set this up during the day, have somebody maybe go into Tracy's office and be on Zoom, and try to troubleshoot, like, how can we set this up so you can hear better? I, I don't know how else to, to do it.
If we put, if we somehow put these- Into our TV, into our Zoom.
Well, the table, I can hear you. If you're sitting at the table, you can hear folks fine. It's just anywhere else other than right there at the table.
Oh, so maybe we ought to also have another microphone, and when somebody else is speaking, they need to approach a microphone?
Yes.
That, um, yeah, but that, your mics, the TV mics are, are completely separate from the Zoom.
So we ought to have a Zoom, a mic?
We need to link these mics into the Zoom somehow.
Those mics do go to the Zoom. They go through the board and go directly. This mic is supposed to picking up people in the room, and-
Yeah, but that's for your TV broadcast, not the Zoom, because this isn't what's broadcasting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it, it, audio from your mics goes all the way through here, then goes back through Tracy's computer and goes out to him.
Oh, really?
So he, he is getting your mics, yeah. It's not through the TV.
Did that just start?
No, it's been on for a long time.
That's why yours, yours is really good. It's just this mic isn't quite as good at picking up.
Ah.
Danny, are you hearing what the explanation we're getting?
No.
No, he can only hear us. He can't hear you.
Whoever, whatever, whatever is making noise other than Opie, I cannot understand.
Well, he's the one who's important anyways.
Okay, so-
Whoever's talking behind, you know, behind me, I can't hear her.
Okay.
I can, I can hear noise, but you can't understand the words.
Yeah.
So, maybe- Words are not important.
It's government.
I think, I think maybe we should have a-
Your words are important.
We ought to, we ought to add another mic. And then when, when people are speaking, we have to just be like, a little more, um, just deliberate.
Talk to the mic.
Deliberate, yeah, you have to talk to the mic, yeah. Okay. This is good. It's learning, learning experience.
So I had suggested that we talk about the quarterly, uh, we're ahead of schedule, so maybe we talk about the budget update, just in case Michael Parker comes to talk about his-
Did I ever suggest that we take times off the agenda?
You did.
You have.
Multiple times.
I mean, I think we ought to just roll ahead, because we have, um, item three, I mean, we have the information, he-
Right.
I thought we appointed a-
He's got a, uh, his zoning licenses. He went through DRB.
Right.
So we have no reason to turn him down.
We have no, even if we wanted to, we have no grounds to turn him down. We've been around this thing before. There's, like, he's been through the process, and we rubber stamp-
I make a motion, I make a motion that we give him what he needs. Get it done.
Second.
And, and what, what Danny means by give him what he me, needs is to approve a cannabis cultivator license. Correct, Danny? That's what you meant, said, that's what you said?
Yes. The move that we approve is cultivator license for Michael Parker.
Sorry, and you seconded?
I did.
Okay. Any discussion?
Oh, I didn't with that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Danny, are you an aye with us? I assume you are. Yeah, was a yes? Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, item four, um, business manager Casey Rowl to provide a budget update for the first quarter of SY 24, which would have just, which just closed end of September, right?
Yeah.
So we're not really that far from the end of the quarter.
We're in L.A.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
You've got this in the back of your packet.
Oh, we do?
We do.
I mean, I don't have to look all the way up there? I like to look up there.
I just put it up there so that other people, like, they can be showed on the screen, so.
Casey, may I just say that it looks fine on the screen with that blue on the paper? It's really hard to read.
Okay.
I think it's okay.
I don't.
If I had, I wouldn't have said anything.
I know.
Um, so overall, our revenues from the general fund are on track to meet budget. Um, we always run into this, but the way our system shows is the actual tax revenues are really a billed amount, which we'll pay the school, um-
So Casey, I lost the, uh, it flashed, and now it says a Zoom.
Oh, you lost the, you lost the video?
Yeah, I, well, I got you guys, but, uh,
Oh, you don't have-
The document is gone.
Oh, maybe stop sharing and share.
The screen just says Zoom.
Okay, I'll just stop the share and try again, just a moment, please.
Oh, there's me.
Sit back.
What about now?
There you go. Yeah, good job. Thank you.
Sure. Um, so basically, um, if we assume that we've collected 25% of our tax revenues, um, we would be at 28%. We should be about 25%. So we're, we're on track, we're 3% over. Um, got a couple categories that are a little bit higher than expected, copier fees and zoning permits. Highway revenues are higher than expected at 63%, and that's basically because the state has sent us three out of four of our quarterly highway payments. And we don't really know why. I just speculate they might have done it to assist with cash flow due to flood damage. That's what I think. They never really explained it, but they basically have sent us three out of four. And they normally do like July, October, January, April, but we've already received three out of four. So I think that's, maybe it was a-
They're trying to be nice.
Yeah.
That's great.
So, um, so that's why that's kind of ahead of schedule, is just because we've received most of those payments. Um, so like I said, um, if we assume that we've collected 25% of our expected revenues, we would be at 28% right now. So we're on track.
Good.
Any questions about the revenue before I move on to expenses? Okay, okay, so, okay, so expenses. Um, we do, I, I did take highway flood expenses and separate those out. We do have some other flood expenses, but they're not huge, like the highway. We have a little bit in fire department, and we have a little bit in buildings and such. But the majority here, besides the wastewater, um, fund that, which is an enterprise fund, um, they're all small, basically. So I did separate out the highway. So if you back up the flood expenses, highway is at 19%. Um, of course, we haven't went into winter yet, but, um, overall, factoring the flood expenses, we're still at 28%. But if we took those, that big lump sum of 228,000 in the highway department out, we would be at like 21%. And we do expect to recoup those, um, from FEMA. It's gonna take some time, but, um, you know, if, if that does happen to come in before the end of the fiscal year, then as of right now, we're in pretty good shape. We've been very fortunate that, um, the town has the cash flow to support these, all of this roadwork that we had to bring the roads back without borrowing, so, um, yeah.
Can you comment on our, uh, our cash position now? Like, we're still, are we still good even after having this unexpected flood expenses?
Yeah, yeah, um, and you know, that's, it's because people are good about paying their taxes. And when they, a lot of people, when they first get their bills, they are already paying them. They're starting to make quarterly payments. Um, water and sewer customers are paying pretty well, so that really helps us. So we appreciate that.
Yeah, we do.
Because it does help us to not have to borrow money and keeps the cost down. So yeah, no, we're, we're still plugging away. We do still have a fair amount of money to spend in, on, like, through the sewer fund to bring the plant back up to pre-flood conditions, but it still appears that we will be able to do that on our own. And if we don't get that reimbursed before the end of the year, um, basically, we'll just create a receivable on our books, because it's money that we're going to get back. Um, it just may not come in before the end of the fiscal year. Um, David and I are confident that as we work through those EEIs in the grant portal, some of that stuff, we're gonna start getting money back, like the Fisher-Foley Bridge and whatever, because we have all the documentation and those are done. So once we get that input, we should be able to start seeing some, some reimbursement for that. So.
And the road stuff.
Yeah, mhm, yeah.
That's great. So just a really good question about that, and we can go into it further later, but because those were unanticipated expenses, do we just basically put that money back into the general fund? Or to future, like, we'll have to update a lot of those culverts later on. Like, we, we basically made the changes that we needed to make, but then we're gonna have, like, do we-
Essentially, that's gonna just, it'll just be like a revenue, like a reimbursement revenue. It offsets the expense, they should cancel each other out. Yes, well,
From FEMA.
Not, 75% for them, and then another 12 and a half from the state.
Okay.
So we'll have, we, it's like 7 and a half percent that we have to pay, which is pretty small in the grand scheme of things.
Yeah, it is. Great.
So, um-
And the other thing, I did talk to the family guy when he was here about the price list for materials. So he was gonna look into it for us. Because back in old seven, when the flooding occurred back then, they had a price list on materials. Like, we would take material out from a pit, you know, processing-wise and stuff, it was $4, but then they would reimburse you $13 per yard of what you would get down here.
Oh, they just had a rate for some stuff?
And equipment rates. The other one is equipment rates. Where, um, I do have the updated equipment rates, so for example, when we use an excavator, we get X amount of dollars per hour when we're using our equipment, um-
Oh, that's good.
Yes. And, and so the materials, it's the same idea. It seems that the reimbursement rate is often higher than what we actually paid, because it's, I think, we think it's like a national average that they reimburse that. So we've been trying to find that list, and speaking of which, um, Tom pulled out some data, and the last big flood that Hardwick had in 2007 was on July 11th.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, mhm. And this was like the 10th into the 11th. That's very ironic.
Interesting.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so this is just the cash?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
Yeah, so all the numbers we've been giving you are just the cash out.
So that doesn't count equipment time?
Right.
Correct.
People time?
Well, people time is just only overtime is reimbursed.
Right, yeah.
But the equipment time is reimbursable.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and our material.
And our materials.
But the budget would reflect overtime, because that's the-
Yes, because the overtime is reimbursable.
All right.
Which would be like the first couple of weeks after the flood.
So the, the, to me, the takeaway message is that because the town is in, is in a good fiscal position going into this, we're still in a reasonably good fiscal position, and we're fully expecting FEMA to reimburse a large percentage of the flood expenses.
Yes, correct. Um, and we've been kind of monitoring it right along, um, because the bond bank came out, or they were developing a loan fund, basically, um, to help, um, flood towns. And it was a very favorable rate. It was like half, a quarter to a half a percent. And, um, it was a seven-year term, with two years of interest only and whatnot. And they reached out to us to ask, but, um, sort of looking at everything, we feel that we're okay. Because we're kind of, other than the wastewater plant, we've got some more expenses to incur, but we're in good enough shape where we won't need to, we won't need to get a loan, so.
That's a really good feeling.
Mhm, yeah, so.
Great.
Yeah. So yeah, that's, that's the first quarter of 2024. The auditors were here the last week in September. Um, I haven't seen like a draft or anything. I know they had some work to finish up. I would expect maybe mid-November, I might have the first draft of that. And I would say probably by the beginning of January, probably a final on that. We definitely dipped into the fund balance. I mean, we anticipated dipping into it like 175,000. I think it was probably, off the top of my head, closer to 260, 270,000. But yeah, so, but ultimately, I mean, we have it, we're, we're okay. Um, so we appreciate that people are paying their bills and helping the town to continue running so that we don't have to borrow money.
Yeah. Did, uh, the auditors interview anyone on the select board this year?
Not me. Didn't talk to me.
They weren't happy about how we dispersed ARPA.
Yeah.
They were.
They weren't.
They were not.
What, what about it?
It'd be nice to have that fund, those funds right now, but-
Um, they felt that there should have been maybe sub-grant agreements with everybody that we gave money to.
Yeah.
Well, we did have, I- Well, we did have, it's just a really good question about that, we did have, I don't know, I mean, I don't think anybody signed anything, but there was a conversation about if funds were spent by twenty twenty-four, then they, like, if they weren't requested, or, I don't know if all organizations have taken the money, but if, I, I remember having a conversation.
They have, we have just, yeah, actually, they have, everything is dispersed except for the ninety-nine-hundred dollars that we're putting into revenue this year, I just need to make a transfer on that, so yeah, everything is dispersed.
But we did ask for a report for town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Have they been turning in reports as requested?
Well, we.
The recipients?
Um, we didn't have, like, anybody that did anything for, we did a write-up ARPA in the town report, but this coming year, anybody who's spent their funds should be prepared to do something, to have a page, we'll have another ARPA page in the town report again.
We should probably remind.
So their concern was the process, was the paperwork involved?
It was that, um, right, because, because we're, we're gonna need a single audit, which means we had more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of federal grant expenditures, including ARPA, um, it meant that, like, once we gave that money to them, we sort of lost control of that, um, and so um, they would have liked to have seen like a sub-grant agreement, like, sub-granting the money to them, where there was covenants that they had to spend a certain way, which we would have had a lot of sub-grant agreements, but, um, yeah.
It's a paperwork issue.
Where he, you know, they said that one thing that they saw was a lot of towns just would be like, okay, we're gonna spend this on highway salaries, we're gonna spend this on police salaries, and just boom, it was done, they said they spent it on X, and then it was done. Um, but yeah. I mean, it, it wasn't, um, at, at this point, we haven't been told we're gonna, like, we're not penalized, we didn't, like, misspend the funds or anything like that, they just didn't really like the way that, um, that we went about it, I guess.
They're not the IRA.
Yeah, I guess that's their prerogative.
But we, I mean.
We followed the rules.
Right, exactly, so.
The rules that we made.
Well, the rules that they made, yeah.
No, no, that's not true.
They didn't say we had to do that.
Right.
Right, so.
Yeah. Okay.
But yes.
So Casey, I really appreciate these, um, concise, um, the one-pagers for the,
Right.
for the expenses and the, um, revenues, that's really good, also really appreciate the annotated detail that we got in our packet, that was, that's nice, too. So just, thank you.
I think that's a lot to look at for people, so it's nice to just have a little summary.
It's easier to talk about with the summary.
Yes.
But I do appreciate the, the detail and your annotations on that, too. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna move us along, next is item five, select board to discuss the current and future classification of the lane.
Are you switching hats?
I want to be.
Somebody else needs to lead this discussion, because I, so I'll start, well, throw out, the lane, apparently, is, um, is some sort of traveled way behind, uh, parallel to South Main Street, uphill and behind most of our main street, uh, buildings. And, um, that's what I know.
And it's currently not maintained by the town? Correct?
Apparently not.
Currently not.
I mean, the, the road sign says private, PVT, so private. So part of it has been, I, it, from what I understand, Claudia Gould has taken on a lot of work with the part that's behind her two buildings, the two buildings, and then the part that she owns, her parcels. But the other part of the lane is pretty well not maintained. It's pretty bad there. How's it used? Um, and it, well, it's parking, um, of people that, residents in the buildings there, park up there. Um, so both the Flower Basket Building and the building, eighteen-seventy-four building or whatever, that, both of those have the least amount of, like, space between the building itself and the ground that the lane sits on, and so it seems like they may be starting to have some issues with water and snow melt, and like now, there's some sandbags behind Nora's building, behind that old co-op building, there are some sandbags and stuff that are supposed to, like, help with the melt this spring, you know, they're, so they're trying to ward off stuff, so, and they're trying to get together around planning, but I brought this to the select board just because it, if there's issues with that road, it's in the, it's in our designated downtown, and it's, it, it seems like it's important to at least make sure that there's, uh, some level of maintenance happening, so that we're not threatening those buildings on Main Street, I mean.
On the other hand, though, I mean, the, the, it sounds like, it's like where they come back to the lane, that's the private property and land of those buildings, so if they feel they should take steps to um, mitigate water intrusion or change drainage, it's their prerogative, right?
It is, but, yeah, I just. Is it one lane, or is it double one, it's one? Yeah.
It kind of varies, because there's parking on, informal parking.
Yeah, they're pulling in, and they have some nose-in parking along part of it, and then it just kind of comes to an end, it's like a dead end, um, sort of circle behind where that entry to the.
Sort of behind the chip joint, almost, isn't it?
Yeah, that building, that LaMoye Housing Partnership Building, and they have an entrance back there for both the Bemis Block and the, has the entrance, but I, it looks like they all have an entrance in the back, I just. Could that be designated as a delivery area? No.
That's a great idea.
No, I don't think it is, because of the hill, and there isn't any way for a truck to turn around up there. UPS does not go up there, FedEx doesn't go in there, no, they don't go in there, because they have to back, they would have to back up the hill in order to come out in that ridiculous intersection, no, I, yeah, I think that's just begging for more problems. I mean, you know, the problem, the bigger part of the problem is there's a fair amount of mold, it's why we lost AT&T. Um, that building has some mold issues that are apparently not being addressed, and so I just, I wanted to bring it forward just because people are asking the Downtown Partnership about it, and what we're gonna do to help them with it, and I don't foresee any way that the Downtown Partnership can really help, except that it is in the designated downtown, so if there's some way to, you know, help lead people, lead, lead those building owners to some sort of, I don't know.
So is it basically right now?
And it just seems odd that there's a private road back there that the town doesn't.
Different sections are owned by each property owner, so like, the, the property lines just go straight back?
Mm-hmm.
That sounds fun.
Yeah, I mean, I sent an email that showed the, you know, where the property lines are, where the designated downtown is, what the, and you know, it's, it's just a real gray area. And if one property owner doesn't do what they should do, how does, how does it affect everybody else?
If it was, let's say, a residential private road, typically, they would do like a private road maintenance agreement, where each of them pays X amount that covers plowing and potholes and whatever, so, I mean, if a group of them got together and did a private road maintenance, and they each put in so much a year, then they could build that fund up to do continuous maintenance.
And then they could just hire one, one firm to do the maintenance.
But there's currently three.
Are there currently three? So it seems like they should, those property owners should organize.
Well, and I think they are trying to, but I just thought, you know, as long as, as long as we, you know, the select board knew about it, it just seemed like, you know, they should get the same advice from everybody they tag to.
Yeah.
So, I think we ought to talk about it.
Okay.
The advice, the advice that I gave to them was, they should get together, they should, um, have a discussion about, um, the property where there's a catch basin, um, which is a LaMoye Housing Partnership, so Alliance is their property manager, should talk to them about the catch basin, and, um, like, they can come and talk to me or the town, but it's all private property.
Yeah.
There's the deed, um, the town clerk found language in thirty-five feet in from, um, Holton Hill, which is about to the telephone pole, which is about to Claudia Gould's second building, where the, it was laid out as a town, as a right-of-way for the, for the town. Not beyond that, there's nothing in those deeds that say that it's a town, that there's a town right-of-way or an easement for the town.
So it sounds like you're on the right track, trying to get people together.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of it, because it does seem like it's kind of a, um, especially, yeah, because, uh, yeah, for whatever's happening at that eighteen-seventy-four building with the mold, um, residents, people in the apartments are complaining about mold, but they haven't invited a health officer in, so
Right.
they're on their own with that, until they do. So, I don't know.
Speaking of which, does anybody want to be health officer?
Well, that was dry, after the water line broke in there.
That's not the building she's talking about.
That is eighteen-seventy-four, eight, eighteen, we had actually shut down the slicker system in there.
Oh, that.
Because that whole backside.
Oh, I thought you meant, I thought you meant the last fire, yeah.
Because that thing exploded upstairs, and then just ran through the AT&T store all the way up the road.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, because he ran out of heat. Pipe split.
So that's a wet?
Huh?
That's a wet system?
Yes.
Who's, who owns that building?
I don't know, changed hands.
Yeah, Larry doesn't own it.
No.
No, Larry sold it. Anyway, that's, that's enough about it, but it's, just to keep it on the, and then as far as them meeting and getting together, I'll just, yeah.
Yeah.
Keep sending them to you.
If, just, I have a, just a question about the downtown designation. Where, in a situation like this, how would the Downtown Partnership not be effective in, in talking with building owners in the downtown?
I mean, that maybe would be, I mean, I, I just don't know.
Okay.
And we're in the process of hiring a, a executive director.
So maybe that's like something they could take on.
It can't be my job.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not putting it on, I'm not putting it on you, for sure, but, but this is like, this is right up that,
Right, and there's potentially, since it's really on that line, I mean, potentially, those building owners could take advantage of some of the benefits of downtown designation
Right.
to really do the right thing in that.
Yeah.
Yep.
On that topic.
So maybe when there's a, the downtown, the
Executive.
Executive Director on board, maybe that's a, a task.
To help with some of that.
And that'll definitely help.
Yeah.
Liaison and stuff.
Yeah. All right, thank you for bringing that to us, um, next, select board reports.
We'll keep working on it.
I'm gonna throw out a thank you to everybody who came out for the, must have been like the twentieth annual pumpkin walk. Um, it was pretty well-attended, roughly five hundred people.
Wow.
Uh, and roughly four hundred pumpkins, all carved, thank you Beth Lacor, art teacher extraordinaire at the elementary school for coordinating all that carving.
That's great.
Good deal.
Yeah. That's what I got, um, any new business?
Uh, well, select board reports, so the townhouse is winding down to the end of the season. Um, we have, uh, one more event in there this Friday night, it's the Psychic Medium, it was very popular last time, very well-attended, just saying.
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night.
Is that like a show, or is that like you, in agreement to sit with them?
You, it's a public, it's a meeting where they, where she receives information and talks to people in the audience.
Oh, but there, but you are like sitting as an audience, you don't go up one by one or something? Okay.
They levitate people.
Yeah.
Well, that's, see, that would be good.
There's a little bit of show, I mean, she's good at it, she's, she's kind of.
Who is it?
Um, Rebecca, can't remember her last name at this moment.
Tomorrow night.
It's on the town, townhouse website, if you want to go look her up, she's got credentials, just saying.
A lot of people do.
And Sally Fishburne has started to work on the doors-to-windows swap. We were at the DRB, the townhouse was at the DRB last night for our conditional, what it was, variance or whatever, for the
I never go to.
construction project that will be going out to bid, um, early in November.
Ooh, that's exciting.
And, um, so in the spring, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll hire somebody, and, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
It's going to happen for the.
Another project.
The Yellow Barn, the library, and the, uh, townhouse.
And the wastewater block.
And the wastewater.
And the pedestrian bridge.
Yeah, right.
And we're getting a roof tune-up.
We're gonna have a whole new town.
There are a lot of trucks in town, just saying.
Lot of people looking for parking places.
All right, um, any other select board reports?
There was lots of parking on Main Street today, just saying.
Any new business or old business? Because they know we're out.
Really quick new business, just a quick consideration, um, there is a Hardwick student who, um, wrote a poem about the flood, um, and it was submitted to the Young Writers Project, and they, it's being featured this week in the Times Argus, and it's a very thoughtful poem. And I talked to the parent about potentially putting it in the town report. Um, I'm not sure where it would go exactly, but I wanted to bring it up to the select board as a possibility.
Can you send it to us?
Yep.
Back cover.
Yeah, or some, or somewhere, but it's.
If it will, if it will fit on the back.
That's a great idea, so I can circulate, I just wanted to throw it out there, okay.
That's cool.
Times Argus?
Oh, the, uh, Young Writers Project.
That's cool.
A talented young writer.
Yeah, very.
All right, anything else? Hearing none, hearing none, let's adjourn, thank you, everyone.